Back of the room.
All right, we will call the special assembly meeting of June twenty sixth to order. Well, Hagi Doc, the land acknowledgement.
We would like to acknowledge that the city and borough of Juneau is on slinket land and wish to honor the indigenous peoples of this land. For more than ten thousand years, Alaska Native people have been and continue to be integral to the well being of our community. We are grateful to be in this place, a part of this community, and to honor the culture, traditions, and resilience of the slinket people.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Mr. Bryson. Ms. Hale.
Here.
Ms. Hughes Candies.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Trine.
Here.
Ms. Wall.
Present.
Well, Hedi Doc. And Deputy Mayor Gladyshevsky.
Here.
And I was instructed to inform you that Mayor Weldon has caught a bad cold, not COVID, but she is home and not going to be participating tonight. And sends her apologies.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So, public participation, Madam Clerk? Is there any one signed up for public participation?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. We did not receive any requests for public participation prior to the, or by the four P M deadline. I do believe we have some signups at the back of the room, so if you want to let me pause and we'll get that sign up sheet.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That'd be great. Thank you, Madam Clerk. There's all on the ordinance. So, the agenda topic, public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty three, Madam Clerk.
My apologies, I gave away all my agendas. This is ordinance twenty twenty three dash thirty, an ordinance authorizing the main manager to advocate for and provide public information regarding the need for a new city hall, including the dissemination of information that may influence the outcome of a future ballot initiative.
Mr. Manager.
This ordinance would enable the manager to advocate for a new city hall project if the assembly decides to put a ballot question before the voters this fall. Fifty thousand dollars for this purpose has been included in the fiscal year twenty four budget. While CBJ regularly provides the public with nonpartisan information about upcoming ballot provisions, Alaska law requires the assembly to adopt an ordinance specifically authorizing the expenditure of funds if those funds are to be used to influence the outcome of an election. Threading the needle of delivering nonpartisan information versus information that might influence the outcome of an election is particularly challenging in this case. People may reasonably debate about the difference of facts and arguments in favor of a city hall facility. These funds would be used to produce and disseminate materials by direct mail media presentations to the community and online. I recommend you adopt this ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. We have one, we have five people signed up to testify in this item. And first Frank Bergstrom, and then next up will be Scott Spickler. If you want to come on up and press the button, so the, oh, there, are they going there? Yeah, sure, go ahead, go there. You're close, close to that microphone. Yep, and press the button so it's green. Tell us your name and area, town you live in, and you'll have two minutes. Madam Clerk, are you timing that? Okay, great, thank you.
Frank Bergstrom, serial number one. Only one of a kind. I live in Juneau and the Red Meyer area. The new city hall is a controversial subject. It is, was turned down by voters last year, which was twenty twenty two, very recently. At the May Finance Committee meeting, Assembly Member Wall proposed that the assembly remove "new" from the title "new city hall." Reason given was that the subject is quote unquote controversial. Controversial subjects have commonly been referred to a committee or commission for impartial study. Ordinance twenty twenty three dash thirty states, and I quote, "enables the manager to advocate," as we just heard, resuming the quote, "for the new city hall." Continues to say, "funds are to be used to influence the outcome of an election." Is this not advocacy? It says so specifically. Is it not controversial? Is this not one sided? Is this not why the assembly has heretofore used commissions or committees as a superior means to evaluate issues in unbiased fashion? Voters turned down a thirty seven million dollar project last year. Now the manager, the assembly, budget, all that, has proposed a forty three million dollar project. How is this not controversial to have increased the charge or the price of the project so much? And especially in light of the city engineers' suggestion that city projects are coming in one point seven to one point eight times the engineer's estimate. So, once again, I think we're looking at a far more expensive project. This is the second time in a year that the assembly proposes to raise property taxes. Well, that's fast.
Did you wrap up your sentence, or you could?
I will wrap it up by saying my personal property tax has increased forty five percent in the last eight years. I'm emblematic of many, many people in this town. I think there is an exhaustion with taxation.
Thank you, Mr. Bergstrom. Thanks for coming down. Scott Spickler, and then Roger Callaway.
My name is Scott Spickler. I'm a North Douglas resident, and having been a life insurance agent for thirty nine years and learned not to say or take the word no, you guys should all be successful life insurance agents because the community said no to this project. The fifty thousand dollars, I think, is is not a wise use for funds. The project should stand on its own merits if you choose to put it on the ballot again. And I hope that you don't, but if you do, I also wish you folks would not bundle projects together. Keep things separate, let things stand on their own merits. And I know you guys have got a tough job. We're one point some billion dollars in deferred maintenance already, not your fault, goes back decades. But we don't have a good history of taking care of what we've got, and if we did, we probably wouldn't be in the current situation. But again, I, I think this fifty thousand dollars should be shot down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spickler. I forgot to ask, anyone have questions for either testifier that I forgot to ask the last time? Okay, thank you. Roger Callaway, and then Don Haberger.
Yeah, hi there. I'm Roger Callaway. I live at Oak Lake, and I'm here to speak against the ordinance of appropriation of fifty thousand dollars, mainly because the city already has a public information officer that we fund, and, and I'm not surprised that the information is that you're trying to distribute is not put out through your funded public information office that we already have. So that's my reason for being against it. We already fund this type of work, so.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thanks for coming down. Don Haberger, and Wayne Coogan.
Good evening. Thank you, Assembly members, for listening to my testimony. I'm Don Haberger. I'm a resident of the back loop area. Part of my comments, actually, my comments also encompass a role that I have as the Executive Director for the First Things First Alaska Foundation. We are a five oh one C three organization that gets involved in public discussions. This public discussion involves whether or not we need a city hall and whether or not we should spend money to advocate for. And for those two points, you have heard previous testimony that this is a controversial issue. First Things First agrees it is a controversial issue. In twenty twenty, October twenty twenty two, it was defeated. That October election had a thirty two percent voter turnout, which is average for the last ten years. It is reasonable to conclude that that turnout said no, and it is the will of the people. However, oh, and so conclusion on those comments is that you should withdraw this ordinance. If you choose to pass it, then the second part of that is a reasonable public debate, so that you should find an organization that is going to present the other side and fund that equally. And let's have a true, honest, not advocate debate, but a public debate on the issue. So with that, those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Haberger. Any questions for Mr. Haberger? Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Haberger, do you, you don't need to have, I guess, an answer for us right away, but I mean, should First Things First, your organization or the, your, the executive director for oppose a new city hall? I mean, would, would you be, would you or someone from your organization be, you know, interested in a, in some type of public potentially debate about the merits of the project?
Mr. Haberger.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Deputy Mayor. I think the First Things First is open to that, but it sort of depends upon what an RFP looks like. It may be that you decide to put on an RFP that, that isn't considered fair, and we may not go after it. So if all things are fair and we're trying to get a true public debate out, then First Things First might be interested in that.
More questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Haberger. And then Wayne Coogan.
Wayne Coogan, Oak Bay. So, with your permission, I want to be rather frank. You know, for the most part, you know, you, you folks, you vote on things, and I don't agree on everything you vote on. I agree on a lot of stuff you vote on, but I, I mean, one thing I deeply appreciate is your commitment and your professionalism, and I think it's rather obvious to everybody, and I appreciate that. And it's generally always there. Now, as regards the, the city hall, you know, I, I mean, this city hall that we're sitting in has a play in the topic, you know? It, it's apparently, some people think it's deficient, and there's twelve, now it's fourteen million dollars that they've allocated that it needs to, to repair it to standards. And I looked at that breakdown, and it was like maybe six numbers on there. So obviously, there's more numbers behind those that I did not see. But we're talking five million dollars plus for mechanical electrical upgrades, another five million dollars for, for partitions and space modifications, and a couple million dollars, three or four for the outside work. You know, and I, I frankly can't see that dire need when I'm walking through the building. I don't know if you can, I can't. But I think what we've crossed, we've crossed into some territory here. I'm really worried about it. You know, I, I care, you know, believe it or not, I care deeply for, for the, the status and, and the, just the state of my assembly, all right? I do not want you folks to be subject to a, a, a view that is not completely honorable. Now, I've, I, I've been here for sixty five years, and I speak to a lot of people out there. I got employees, I got tenants, I got all these people that I communicate with all the time, and they're concerned. I'm, I'm hearing concerns that would maybe not be expressed on Facebook, because you know, you say things face to face that you do not say in writing on the internet, right? So I'm, I'm delving into this, and I'm tapping these people for this, this feedback, and they're gravely concerned about this, this topic of this, the assembly advocating in a, in a, in a political manner for a project that was voted down from, by more than half the people. You're using, using those folks, those voted nay, they voted nay on the project, were using their money to advocate against what they voted, their vote, right? And that's perceived out there, and I'm concerned about my assembly. I just want to make sure that you understand that. It's, it's a matter of honor. I want you to know that I'm concerned about this, so that's, that's what I have.
Thank you, Mr. Coogan. Questions for Mr. Coogan? Thank you. Is there anyone else who didn't sign up who wants to testify on this item? Anybody? Okay, we'll close public testimony. Someone, Mr. Bryson.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I move the assembly adopt ordinance twenty twenty three dash thirty, an ordinance authorizing the manager to advocate for and provide public information regarding the need for a new city hall, including dissemination of information that may influence the outcome of a future ballot initiative. And I would like to ask for unanimous consent.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Just an objection for the purposes of a question. Mr. Manager, if this does not pass, what kind of information can be put out about, about the, a proposed project? I mean, what does, what does city staff feel, you know, is legal or comfortable to, to put out?
Mr. Watt.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Well, it would look like last year, we would not engage, for example, in social media if there was misinformation out there. We would not correct erroneous assumptions. We would not participate if community groups asked for presentation, lunch presentations. We would, we would not provide mailer. I think we've all thought that flyer, postcard, things like that. We would, you know, narrowly stay out of the electoral process, and I think that can be, as I've noted in the manager's recommendation, what is and isn't a fact, or is information, what is or isn't advocacy can be difficult since people want to debate that. So I think we would largely be silent. And, and I do not think that the voters would benefit from the reasons this project has been proposed, and it's for those reasons that I've recommended this appropriation and this authorization.
More questions? I have a question and a clarification. We do have a public information officer who is paid, so could you explain the relationship between this fifty thousand dollars and that person's salary and the various things? And why, why is any additional, is this additional money, or is this author, is it sent to spend it on this subject because of the technicalities regarding advocacy with APOC?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, so it's a good question. It, it, the fifty thousand dollars looks like additional money, but really what it would do is offset staff costs. So as an example, our information officer, if she worked on this issue and provided information to the public, we would assign the costs, we would track and assign those costs to this appropriation. If, as an example, the Chamber of Commerce invited me out to a lunchtime event to talk on the topic, we would assign my salary costs for that. So it would, it would offset other costs. So I don't think that all said and done in the accounting, this would be new expenditure of funds, it would, it would offset existing budget authority. I hope that clarifies your question.
Yes, thank you. And so we could, if we wanted to do a fifty thousand dollar decrement, this is just an APOC accounting issue of advocacy, correct? So we could take fifty, whatever, some number out of the budget that really was already in the budget, it's APOC thing, more than an additional money.
Deputy Mayor, I think that is, is true to a large degree. However, we anticipate flyer, postcard, which would be a, a new expenditure. So, so I think it would be fair to call those new costs, but for all the staff costs, they would offset existing budget. We're not hiring anybody new to work on this issue.
Ms. Ms. Hale.
Thank you. And, and this is also kind of a clarifying question related, I think, to what you said. So, Mr. Manager, one of our speakers tonight mentioned that we have a PIO, and the PIO can get information out, but it's my understanding that unless we do this, the PIO can't get information out. Is that correct?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. That, that is correct. The, the APOC rules are fairly narrow, and, and they recommend, and because this issue has been argued and litigated, they recommend specific appropriation and specific legislative authority to participate in the electoral process, and, and clearly, we would be trying to influence the outcome of the election. We believe that a new city hall is in the best interests of our citizens, and in the effort to provide information, we would be trying to influence the election. So APOC requires these two separate authorizations.
Okay, so. Questions, or is there any objection to the adoption of this ordinance? Seeing none. It's adopted. And that is it for us today. Mr. Watt, anything else?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Okay, we will adjourn as an assembly and re-adjourn as soon as the clerk is ready for the next meeting. Okay, we will call the committee of the whole of June twenty sixth to order. And the land acknowledgement, who's got their, Mr. Bryson, you're sitting there with your paper?
Deputy Mayor, we would like to acknowledge that the city and borough of Juneau is on clinket land and wish to honor the indigenous people of this land. For more than ten thousand years, Alaska people have been and continue to be integral to the well being of our community. We are grateful to be in this place, a part of this community, and to honor the culture, traditions, and resilience of the clinket people. Gunashish.
Thank you, Mr. Bryson. The clerk will note that all assembly members except for Madam Mayor are present. Approval of agenda, any changes to the agenda? I don't see anyone nodding their head. Minutes from September twenty sixth. Any objections to their adoption? I don't see anybody objecting. Okay, then we'll go to the first agenda items, short term rental ordinance. I will just note that there was some confusion about roundtable discussion, just, just not today. We're not having a discussion or testimony. The next opportunity to testify in this item will be at the assembly meeting when this is taken up. So we've got a bunch of input from folks, and there's a new draft. So there's a new draft in our folder, and it's got the strike throughs and the additions, all the whereas clauses are new, and a few strike throughs. The one is on page three of five. It's instead of a copy of their business license, it's just the business license number. Amenities is crossed off on page four of five. And the, again, this is the staff's new draft ordinance effective in ninety days. So, Mr. Watt, do you have, or anybody, Mr. Bar, Mr. Barr, anything to say?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I think the only other thing to note, other than the changes to the ordinance that you pointed out, is that there is a memo in your packet that seeks to answer some of the questions that were brought up during public testimony. I won't go through it in great detail. Amenities, pulling that out was one of those, one of those things, and it was not, not our intent to require that property owners provide us with, with, in detailed inventories. We, there, I can, I can go through this in quite some detail if you would like, but I think you probably don't. Happy to dive into those weeds if you want. And other, other than that, I think the ordinance changes that you noted are the salient points. Lastly, I'll point out that there is on packet page eighteen, kind of a, for your information, a draft of what a rental registration form might look like. Obviously, this could change if you further edit and change the ordinance, but we wanted to provide you with this to give you a sense of what we might be asking property owners who operate short term rentals to fill out per, per short terminal. So, that's it.
Great, thank you, Mr. Barr. So the assembly sent this back to the committee of the whole for amendments, and so there's some amendments in here. Does anyone have more or objections to the ones that are here, or anything, Ms. Ms. Trine, and then Mr. Bryson?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I have another amendment.
Go ahead.
And it would be on page four of the ordinance under the exemptions section, and it would add an exemption. So we, there's currently in here an exemption for hotels. It would add another one to read, "a business that is registered as a bed and breakfast and defined by forty nine dot eighty dot one twenty and has gone through the conditional use permit process," and I'll speak to that briefly.
So before you do that, tell me where that would be exactly.
Um, so after the sentence about hotels, I guess we would probably put some numbers on there to number hotels is.
Okay, so another whatever, little, little eye or something, whatever. Okay, so read it again, so.
Yep, so it would be a business that is registered as a bed and breakfast and defined by, this would be CBJ code forty nine dot eighty dot one twenty, and has gone through the conditional use permit process. And that would exempt B and Bs, as we would traditionally think of them, because they have been regulated through the land use code and the planning commission, and are, we treat them differently, and that is my amendment.
So objection to that amendment? Mr. Smith?
I just had a question. I had thought of something similar, had spoken with the deputy city manager about it, and Mr. Barr, was it, am I recollecting this correctly, like, there is, do you have, do you have any concern if, if this amendment doesn't have a, you know, if, if they, if they're not, if they're using any of their rooms and things for a short term rental?
Mr. Barr.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I think that I think it's a bit of a policy call. I think that the distinctions between a bed and breakfast and a short term rental are sometimes unclear and sometimes clear. And where they are sometimes unclear is in the case where you note where they're not, where they're operated on a typical short term rental platform, like Airbnb or VRBO, et cetera. And the, I, I think you can go either way on this, and I think I'm, I'm a little bit wishy washy on this, because I think at the end of the day, it depends on any future regulatory decisions that you make. There are communities that regulate bed and breakfasts separately than how they regulate short term rentals, as we traditionally think of them, and there are communities that don't, and regulate them together. You, if you exclude bed and breakfasts from the registration ordinance, you will have a little bit less data at the end of the day, when you're thinking through regulatory options than you would if you included them. I don't think the numbers are terribly significant, though.
Can I follow up? Mr. Barr, do you know, have any idea how many we have official bed and breakfasts? Is Ms. McLean here? No. Okay.
I don't think we do.
Who, follow up, Ms. Trine?
Yeah, I guess I'll just speak a little bit more to my intention of making the amendment. I think our, the whole ordinance, our desire and policy goal behind it is to measure the effect of short term rentals on our local housing stock. And B and Bs are not going to be part of our local housing stock, and so I don't think that they need to be accounted for in this data in the same way that we would a room in somebody's house, a whole apartment, et cetera, that kind of thing, and that's why I think that they're separate and don't need to be included in this, and probably are not going to be included in future regulations either.
Okay, we have Ms. Hale, and then Ms. Hughes Candies. Did you have your hand up, Mr. Bryson? No, okay, Ms. Hale.
Uh, thank you. Objection, just for purposes of a question, and it's a question for Mr. Deputy City Manager. Since we have a robust registration process already, can we not count B and Bs through that process so that can be part of our data?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. We can look at that. It, it's probably something that we can do on, on the organization's internal, on our, on the internal side of our organization, but I'm, I'm a little bit hesitant to commit to it because it's a process that would cross departments. So currently, as you know, conditional use permits issued by the planning commission, supported by the community development department. This registration program administered by the sales tax office in the finance department, the data won't be the same. But we, we will probably be able to include some data about bed and breakfasts in, about and breakfast businesses in a final, you know, in a, in a presentation. in bed and breakfast businesses in a final, you know, in a, in a presentation down the road. Once we have data from the short-term rental registration program, it won't be the same, won't be apples to apples, but some.
Ms. Hughes Candies?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I think maybe Mr. Barr is answering my question. I was just curious. I would guess that it's not super big number, but is that something that, and you may not know the answer to this, but would CDD, because they've gone through the conditional use permit process, is that something, do we know if they have records of?
CDD has records. If, if there's a, if they've been getting conditional use, they have a, they don't know. Once it's given, they don't know whether it's operating or anything, but they know that it exists.
Right.
And, and their data are bad, so I don't know how good they are about getting it back, Mr. Barr.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, you, you, you pretty much hit it. It, it would be a bit of a research project.
More, so is there, Ms. Hale?
Thank you, I, I, I was gonna wait to bring this up, but given the, the, the current amendment that's on the table, I had tried to reach out to city staff, but it was too late in the day. And I have been talking with people who manage these. And as a small business owner myself, I have filed many quarterly sales tax returns online. And the question was posed, if, if people have something, one of the problems, and I'll get to this later, is that short-term rentals often cycle through a short-term rental and then they'll go to more than 30 days. And so then they're a long-term rental. And so when we talk about, you know, how to capture that, that gets complicated. People have to file quarterly or annual if they don't make, annually if they don't make enough income, but they have to file sales tax returns. If their short-term rental is a 30-day during that sales tax return period, they have to file bed tax and sales tax together. So they already have to change the form that they file with CBJ. And the question was posed, and I, I know we don't get into the necessarily the details of the forms, but it would be a really good way to capture information if they could file that through that sales tax. And the reason I bring this up now is we could easily capture information about bed and breakfast then, if we were able to go that route. And so I, I won't be opposing the amendment, but I don't, I don't know that. Yeah.
Okay, so. Who, you pointing at somebody? Oh, thank you, I was like, did he want to say something? Is there objection to that motion? Mr. Watt?
Deputy Mayor, not, not an objection, but if we can have a brief at ease or a little staff huddle to make sure that we understand the implications of it, maybe two, three minutes.
Please do, don't go anywhere, Assembly, please. Hey, we'll call the COW back to order, and we have. If you would identify yourself for the record, that'd be awesome. We have a staff member. Go ahead. Ruth?
For the record, Ruth Kostick, CBJ Treasurer. And I oversee the sales tax office. And the, the one complicating factor, I think, with, with excluding B and Bs in particular is that business names are not always used on short-term rental listings. And so being able to specifically tie a registered, a permitted B and B with a short-term rental listing on, say, Airbnb or VRBO is not always as straightforward as it seems it might be.
Any questions for Ms. Kostick? We're here for voting, I'm gonna object, it's, I don't think there's very many. I do know from being on the planning commission that some of those permits were given 25 years ago. And we don't know if they're operating or not. And I don't think there's that many anymore because I wish we knew from Ms. McLean and how easy it is to even know. But, so anyway, I'll, I'll object to this one. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, this is for amendment number one on page four of five as proposed by Ms. Tree, Ms. Tree?
Yes.
Mr. Smith? Ms. Hughes Candies?
No.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Ms. Wall?
Oh.
Walaki Doc?
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Gladyshevsky?
No.
Motion fails four to four.
Okay, Ms. Hale, you had some suggested amendments?
Yes, thank you. Madam Deputy Mayor, I, I have two, I think. I first, if I may, speak to what I had begun to speak to when I was speaking to Ms. Tree's amendment. If we look to page four of five of the red folder ordinance, line eight, which is F. And if there's a change in the information submitted pursuant to subsection E of this section, a new registration must be completed within 10 business days. Speaking with operators of these facilities, they, as I said earlier, often cycle between short-term rental and longer-term rental. They do that in the summertime when things are very busy. And if we, if particularly, if we cannot include this in sort of the quarterly income, sales and bed tax report, there's a real risk that it might not be submitted as this cycling happens through the, the very busy summer season. And if that 10 business days was missed and those flurries of paperwork weren't submitted, the businesses would, would be subject to $25 per day. So I would advocate a quarterly report. I would advocate that that quarterly report be combined with the sales and bed tax. I just don't know if it's possible. That would provide, I, I don't know, see, so that would provide us the ability to see in that given quarter, for example, the number of days that, that that facility was operated as a short-term rental, rather than us having to find, get a new form every single time that, that, that changes to short-term rental. So I, at, at a minimum, I would I would change that 10 business days to 30. But really, I'd like to hear from staff if that is possible to combine it so that we can collect the information on a larger scale, ongoing basis, rather than form after form being submitted for the same facility.
Ms. Kostick, can you talk about the relationship between quarterly sales taxes and all the things Ms. Hale's talked about?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I think to start to respond to Ms. Hale's comment about the, the changes, you know, when we talk about if there's a change, it's really like, is the, has the business been sold? Not, are you, do you have a long-term renter for a few months versus a short-term renter? It's have the fundamental pieces of the, of the business changed in terms of, yeah, you've sold your business. As far as combining this with the quarterly tax return form, I think it's important to remember that a tax return form is about the business and, and operator may operate multiple, if not, you know, a dozen or more short-term rental units. And we've, the ordinance is proposing to register units. And so to gather that information on a tax return, suddenly you've got multiple pages of attachments with that if an operator has a dozen or more units that they're operating.
Go ahead, Ms. Hale.
Thank you, that's a really good point. I wonder then if there is a way of reconciling what's said on line eight, if there is a change in the information submitted? Because the information submitted on this form is short-term rental unit information. And if it's not being used as a short-term rental anymore, I'm, I'm sorry, somebody's shaking their head.
It's only the information in subsection E.
Subsection E, I was just, I was just doing the same thing. If you read what's in subsection E, it's their business license number, their name, their address. Right, so that's what you mean, name, address, business. There's, is there nothing in here that says, I am short-term renting this for one day versus 30 days or, or six days? Not 30 because I've now subjected myself to a different definition, but you, right? You're not asking, Ms. Kostick?
Madam Deputy Mayor, that is correct.
Okay, so does that answer your question, Ms. Hale?
Uh, that helps a lot, yes, thank you.
So are you wanting to make an amendment about 10 now or no? You, we're good with 10?
I'd like to make that 30.
Okay, the motion is to, on page four of five of the new ordinance, line nine, Ms. Hale would like to make change 10 to 30. That's amendment two, Ms. Tree?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, I just have a question for Ms. Kostick. In other areas, I'm thinking maybe like sales tax, if a business closes, do we have a, a standard number of days that they're supposed to tell us that? Do you know that off the top of your head, wisdom?
Ms. Kostick, or does anybody know?
That's, that's a good question.
So we're, okay.
I might have an answer to that.
Mr. Bryson?
On the sales tax line, it says, is this business closed and no longer collecting sales tax? So it actually asked it on the sales tax form. And so at the, when the sales tax would be due, that's when you would notify the city on the sales tax form.
Uh, more comments on this motion? Is there objection to the motion? The 30 days? Ms. Hughes?
Love to see that, right? With that face followed by a very slap finger.
In the face or the hands?
Yep, yep, yep.
Candies, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I ask for just one minute, Eddie, now knowing that this is just subsection E and consider whether that is standing? Otherwise I did on the fly, but you guys.
Uh, yep, we got a minute, Eddie is. All right, we'll resume. So the motion to change 10 to 30 is your objection to that motion? Okay, hearing none, that's adopted. Who else, Ms. Hale?
Somebody else has.
Did someone else, Ms. Hale, oh, Mr. Bryson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I didn't, Madam Deputy Mayor, I don't actually have specific amendments yet, but I had two very specific questions that might help shape future amendments. Uh, my questions are, what could an operator do that has multiple locations? Is it, is the answer just simply they have to fill that form out for all 18 locations? If they have 18 locations, okay. And then if an STR operates some of the time as an STR and they're registered in it as an STR, if they go to 30 days during some period during that year of registration, do we care? And so it requires no information. So as long as they go back to short-term rental, they, and were properly recording it or reporting it, it wouldn't matter if for a small time they were long-term. Those are two very easy answers, I have no amendments from that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bryson, Ms. Hale?
Thank you. I spoke with the Madam Mayor earlier and, and she asked me to carry this, and I'm happy to do so because I agree. This relates to page three of the red folder ordinance. Line 14, registration must be renewed annually. I don't know that the ordinance itself needs to be changed, but, or perhaps it does. But if nothing has changed, the mayor has requested that there be a checkbox that nothing has changed so that they would have their STR registration number and sign and date it, but just check the box that nothing has changed, so they don't have to fill out that whole form every year for those 18 units, for example. So I don't know if that's requires a change here.
I don't think it requires a change, that's something that I think the intent of the Assembly is to make this as easy as possible. So whatever you can do to the forms to make it as easy as possible, combine them with some other form or whatever, make a checkbox. We all 100% want that to happen. Anybody not objecting to that? No, okay.
I have one last.
Go ahead.
Thank you. This is page three and four, but starting on page three of the ordinance, the contact information for the emergency point of contact. I would like to strike section three completely. I, I don't think this is necessary. If we need it at some point later, we can add it, but we don't need it for registration.
Okay.
Unanimous consent.
And because the, we already have the operator name and the owner name, so, Ms. Hughes Candies, you have an objection?
Uh, objection for purpose of a question, or clarification on the motion first, just because you brushed you that. So the, your, Ms. Hale, your intent is to strike the emergency point of contact?
That's correct.
Item three, E3, delete all of E3.
I think I'm gonna with, or maintain my objection. And then I can speak to it if I'm the only one with any objection.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I agree, we're at the point right now where if we're just trying to get the registration, so this won't be the end of the world if we strike this. However, considering we do have some folks where they have six, as many, you know, they might have multiple units and you might have somebody where that's their business and they're the one who's owning six Airbnbs, but they're not necessarily the person who's managing them. I don't think that if they're using, which is fairly common, to use a, a management service, I don't think it's crazy to, or it seems still relatively easy for the provider to provide that to the city. And just looking at some, thankfully, we, less so is the neighborhood piece of Airbnbs, that's less so, I think, our issue in Juno. So I can see why people think we don't need that, but I do think there is that potential. And given that you, it's a frequent arrangement where people aren't managing all of their own units, I think it makes sense to have contact information for each unit.
Ms. Wall?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I'll speak in favor of this, I wasn't thinking about it, but I appreciate Ms. Hale's amendment. I do think it's kind of stepping into regulating short-term rentals before we've really got to the point where we've all agreed on how and why we're doing that.
Just to make, to clarify, if we, I'm, I support this as well, but the form right now says property owner and property management contact, that would still remain because we, we define owner and, and operator, correct? Because it doesn't say, the form doesn't say emergency contact for 123 main bedroom three. It just says property, should probably say property operator, since that's what the ordinance says. But anyway, am I correct in this before I vote yes?
Madam Deputy Mayor, yes, I think you're correct. And it is, it is a draft form, just to give an idea.
Right, fair enough. Okay, Mr. Bryson?
So, Madam Deputy Mayor, I initially was siding with what you guys are looking at right now, thinking that we wouldn't want to require an owner's point of contact. I had a fire in a unit that I have, and I got a call from the fire chief. the next morning, because it happened over the middle of the night. And if they didn't have my contact information, the tenants could have skipped out. I mean, they didn't call me. It was the fire chief that called me. So having this very real information about people's property, if the city's using it for contacting the owners, there are occasions when the city needs to contact the owner and not the tenant and not the property manager. Um, and I say that as a property owner. So while I know that's not the the popular decision, we're not asking for unknowns here. We want who you are, who owns the property. So if something happens to the property, we can contact the right person. To me, that seems like the right direction. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Bryson. I just want to clarify again, if I'm before or or the form as it exists, and I know you're still fixing it, but it asks for owner and and management or operator. Would the form still be able to say that if we took this emergency contact language out? Mr. Barr.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Um, the answer to your question is yes, um, because of section E two.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll also just note uh on section E three, that particular policy language. Um, again, I think this is definitely a policy call. You, you can decide if you think it's important for us to have an emergency contact in addition to owner and operator contact. Um, that that policy language in other municipalities is typically included when those municipalities are struggling with neighborhood type of complaints and noise complaints. Not to say that there are other benefits to having emergency contact, as Mr. Bryson noted, but that's, that's why we initially had it in there.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Ms. Hughes Candice, you want to speak to your objection again?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. No, I was going to clarify why it would be on the form if it wasn't in this and I see E two now, so I don't really, I just wanted to make sure that there was a owner and an operator. So I'm, I'll remove my objection.
Okay, great, perfect. So I don't, maybe, Mr. Bryson, do you object? No, okay. No objection to removing that since owner and operator on here. Thank you very much. Any other amendments? Someone, um, Mr. Smith?
Well, I guess, I guess I, we, I had a question. Okay, I guess my question is just, is will this form be available online or will people have to fill it out and put it in the mail?
Kostick.
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. The form will be online. We'll have an online version of this that people can fill out.
Pardon me, and then submit electronically. Okay.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hale.
Uh, thank you, Ma- Madam Deputy Mayor. I move uh ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-six B as amended tonight to the full assembly for public hearing. And I ask for unanimous consent.
Great. Thank you very much. Seeing no objection to that. We're good to keep going? We'll keep going. Uh, thank you for everybody who came to testify and gave us uh helpful information, so we made this better than the last time we saw it. BRH proposed purchase of BBGH Development LLC. That's a lot of letters. Mr. Watt?
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. So in June, we introduced an appropriation ordinance for eighteen, eight-point-one million from hospital fund balance for the purchase of this property, uh, which is a priority of the board. We have Mr. Keith here tonight and uh, Mr. Muse from staff and most of the board, I think at least five board members. And uh, I I think over the years, uh, the the hospital has struggled with the opportunity to uh control space for their operations. And I think there's great interest uh on the board and the administration to having more physical plant and flexibility. And so they've uh prioritized purchase of this property. I will say, um, it is difficult for any CBJ entity to acquire uh property, because you've got a, in this case, you've got board process, you've got your business case analysis, you've got negotiation with the property owner, you've got to get an appraisal, you've got an assembly process. So, you know, it's not a matter of getting the cart in front of the horse, it's a matter of getting the locomotive and all the trains moving in the same speed, which is really hard. Um, I don't have anything to offer on the the merits of this, but you're going to see uh in public hearing on July tenth, uh, this ordinance for uh adoption. Uh, I believe that the appropriation will provide sufficient funds to bring home a negotiation to acquire their property. Uh, so tonight is your opportunity to ask the administration uh or the board chair questions about this, should you have any? And that's all I have to say on this topic.
Thank you, Mr. Watt. Um, does anyone have questions regarding the business case for this or anything of of Mr. Keith of BRH? Any questions at all? We will call them up. Mr. Uh, Ms. Wall, who would you have a question of? Mr. Keith, could you come on up?
Yeah, someone from the hospital would be great.
Thank you for being with us. And if you make the light green, so you can talk, Ms. Wall.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, and thank you for being here, uh, Mr. Keith and members of the hospital board. I'm curious about kind of uh how we should respond to the public who ask about um, who use the services of Juno Bone and Joint Center as kind of a important staple in our community and what this change is going to be mean for providing those services that have been provided.
Mr. Keith.
Through the Deputy Mayor, thank you for the question. Over time, it will be utilized primarily for medical care, middle, medical services, professional services. As um, some of you may be aware, um, adding new specialties and bringing in new services to the community uh somewhat challenged with space. And as we uh rearrange space in the existing hospital proper, we have no swing space. So over time, I think you'll see uh a transition uh from some of the services there to mostly medical. Primarily, we will maintain the orthopedic program and what we do there and their therapies is very important to the community.
Uh, Ms. Tree.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Um, I was wondering if Mr. Solomon Gross could tell us about the board's decision process to get to this. And I've been at many of the meetings and I think Ms. Hale probably, I don't know if this was during your time as well, but uh for the enlightenment of the rest of the assembly, if you could give us the Cliff Notes.
Great. So um, I I think if you look in page twenty of your packet, the executive summary that was written up by Nate Rumsey kind of spells it out really good. This is a really great piece of property that's kind of contiguous with with our location. So to be able to have a property that's so close to Bartlett that we're going to be able to provide services that this community doesn't have right now. So this, this is the best scenario um with properties that are out there for Bartlett to be able to really be able to serve the people of Juno. And it's important that um, we know that, that um fortunately, the property came in, you know, the appraisal came in well uh above what the asking price is or what we've negotiated with. So um, wi- with that, I really believe that this is really going to help Juno and the people of Juno. I hope that answered your question, Ms. Tree.
More, any other questions? More questions? Ms. Hale?
Uh, thank you. Uh, I'll just build on Ms. Tree's question. Um, how long has this been sort of in the works? Because it's, you guys have been thinking about this for some time. Um, so.
So um we've been working on this for a number of years. So I I've been the the chair for three years. So at least the whole time that I've been uh the chair, I've worked on it with several different CEOs, as you guys all know. Um, and and um, getting to this point here, um the, I be- I believe that the people that actually own Juno Bone and Joint, they really are are believers in Bartlett. And they want Bartlett to be able to succeed and to be able to um uh gi- give us this without actually putting down the open market is really going to help us considerably. So uh, they've been talking with me for at least three years right now. And I think, Ms. Hale, you uh, we might have talked about this before too, when when you were our liaison too. So thank you for reminding me of that.
More questions for the hospital, Ms. Hughes Candice?
Thanks, Madam Chair. Thanks to both of you for being here. I wanted to ask, this is, we know very well here how fast things move at the speed of government. And uh, hearing the history of how long you've been talking about this, I know you're well familiar with that as well. Um, I see the note of the an immediate benefit will be the commercial, a commercial income that you'll be getting just from the leasing, the space. This property as opposed to the family practice property has a lot going for it, being on the campus and having more room to expand and the zoning and all of that. Could you speak a little bit in to knowing that things take time and that expansion or space limitations is something that's been identified in your strategic planning? What would be like a loose timeframe that you see expansion into that? Just considering that people get services in there now and you'll be getting the rent right away. But what, what do you think is loosely feasible of where you might start expanding into the building with other service lines?
Mr. Keith, isn't that, you're the operator of the hospital, isn't that a question?
I'm sorry, Madam Deputy Mayor, I didn't hear what you said.
No, I was gonna refer that to Mr. Keith. He's the hospital operator. He's the guy who would.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, uh, Deputy Mayor. We are actively recruiting specialists right now. And so, for example, we had a meeting with a a nephrologist who's interested in doing inpatient nephrology. And he's also offered us the opportunity, maybe do a nephrology clinic. And so we'll utilize possibly that space for that. We also are in discussions to cardiologists that want to establish a more permanent practice in Juno. And again, it comes back to where do we put them? So the space gives us the opportunity to consider those options for those specialties. And certainly, uh, uh, in fact, I had a conversation with pulmonologists today. So it gives us the opportunity to have a cogent conversation with specialists that may be interested in, almost always they ask, or where would I be housed? Where would you put up my practice? Where would you be able to support me? And Juno Bone and Joint gives us that opportunity in the future to look at transitioning uh those folks into into that space.
Um, Ms. Go ahead, Ms. Hughes Candice.
Thanks. I know that was a really long-winded question that I gave you. So I see total, it's a sweet space, a great uh possibilities, and we need that space. But so that's sounding like, based on your answers to that more immediately, I I'm more asking for a timeframe, like when you think, knowing that you can't give me a real timeframe exactly, and things take a lot of time. Um, but within a year, within two years, less than a year?
Yours? Go ahead.
I'm gonna roll the dice and say probably twelve to eighteen months before you start seeing some, some good activity in that, that respect.
Uh, so let me ask you a question just to be clear. You're buying the building, not the business or the business? Or is the business going to keep operating in the building? Could you explain the actual mechanics of the thing that's going to happen? Because you're talking about moving cardiologists in there. So is Juno Bone and Joint as it exists going to stay there or no?
Deputy Mayor, the Juno Bone and Joint will stay in place. They'll, and they will continue operating the physician practice. Uh, we will own the real estate. And so we'll be able to control the real estate on, on a go-forward basis. Not to say we wouldn't be interested in ultimately buying the practice, but that's not in the very near future.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Hale.
Uh, thank you, uh, Madam Deputy Mayor. And the, the drawing, I had a color copy on the computer, but this is a black and white copy, unfortunately. Um, it includes both buildings, is that correct, the purchase? So the second building doesn't ha- has a lot of other things other than uh medical practices in it. So that, that also seems like it would be room for things even as Juno Bone and Joint is still there. Is that correct?
Um, yes, um, I believe, I believe like uh, um, Mr. Keith said, it gives us opportunities to possibly put clinics in there.
Um, may I ask a question to the manager?
Oh, you, no, that's good.
Oh, uh, regarding the process for this and actually the actual paying of money and the signing of buying things, I I've heard about flooding in that area. I don't know if it was in the appraisal. So what happens regarding those issues? Is that something you uh check before you sign the paper or how does that work?
Deputy Mayor, so the, the ordinance uh gives budget authority for the acquisition of the property. Uh, title fifty-three uh authorizes the manager to acquire real property uh upon appropriation uh for um fair market value. Uh, so uh, I would work with the the hospital administration to complete the details of all of that. Uh, and I think that can happen within this uh budget authority.
Okay, so you will look at it, those issues that may have come up since the appraisal? Okay, I just, I'm all hung up. Yeah, um, who are the other, I know we're talking a lot about Juno Bone and Joint, but who are the other tenants here and what is the intent with the other tenants?
I, I mean, I, I know there's a Grumpys or there. Um, there, there's, there's some other businesses, Edward M. Jones is, was.
A U Y C.
ABAs there too. Yeah, so ABA is moving, actually will move into the Aurora Behavioral Health place. So there's, there's, there will be space coming up, but there is people in the current spaces right now.
ADA?
ABA is the Applied Behavioral Analysis.
Okay, thank you. You good? Well, so the intent then is that most of those folks will be leaving the, the premises so that we can move in Bartlett.
We've won, um, I, I think our approach is be respectful and look at their contracts and work with them. Uh, we don't want to be perceived as uh being a bully. And so we will work with them and make it collegial.
Any more questions? All right, seeing none. Thank you for coming. Thanks for explaining all the things you will, this will be at our meeting someday that I, you've told me that I, uh, July tenth. Thanks. Okay, um, the last item, Aurora Integrated Oncology Foundation, something uh unique. We've never heard of Tefra bond hearings until recently, and we did a lot of looking, looking it up. And um, you want a break? I don't think this would be long. You want a break? Okay, we'll take a break for five minutes. We're gonna call the Assembly Committee to hold back to order. And I think Ms. Wall will walk in the room any second. Mr. Watt?
Uh, Deputy Mayor, you have a memo from myself on top of information that has been submitted by Aurora Integrated Oncology Foundation, a new Alaska nonprofit. In the audience, we have Dr. Wong uh from the Southeast Radiation Oncology Center. And on line, we have Mr. Merrill, who is President of Radiation Business Solutions. And he is the uh founding uh director of the nonprofit. So um, a topic not normal to us and not one that we have expertise in. Uh, but the, the concept here is uh Southeast Radiation and several other oncology providers in Alaska want to form a new nonprofit uh for a variety of business reasons and use federal Tefra bond financing. Tefra bonds are uh tax-exempt bonds uh that were authorized in, when in the, the term Tefra comes from the early eighties when they uh made updates to the act. In order to get those Tefra bonds, we're advised, and you've got this information in your packet, that the local governing agents that the local governing agency is required to hold a public hearing and pass a resolution of support. I have been unable to understand the guidance on how you, you make that decision. Mr. Merrill, online, I'm sure could answer lots of questions. The, the group is simultaneously asking, making this request to the Kenai Peninsula Borough, the municipality of Anchorage, the Matu Borough, as well as the city and borough of Juneau. Those are the four local governments where these oncology centers operate. The, the entity, um, I did receive this afternoon, uh, the bylaws and the founding documents of the nonprofit. It would be a C-three organization. And in the memo, I have provided the initial board of the nonprofit, which would include several Alaskan community members, a majority of the board, and the board would be self-appointed. I do not have much more to offer on this. It's clearly not an area of expertise that I have or that staff has. I think this is a good opportunity for the Assembly to ask questions of staff or Mr. Wong or Mr. Merrill, who is online.
Thank you, Mr. Watt. Mr. Merrill is online, you say? Is that what you said?
I believe he is. He's been, he's been tracking the meeting and I believe he should be listening.
Okay, in case there's questions for him. So these have been asked of the several municipalities around Alaska. My understanding is one has already done it. Is that correct?
Deputy Mayor, that's correct. Kenai Peninsula Borough, and you should in your packet have a signed, actually, we don't have the signed one in the packet, but we do have a signed one in the email. So that's, that's an oversight that we didn't give you the signed version.
Okay, thanks. Something unusual we've never done, even though it plays for forty years. No one's asked us for this in forty years, as far as we know. Any questions for staff or Mr. Merrill? It's, uh, like I said, we've never done it before, but our understanding, it's a, it's required by federal tax law to access private, tax-exempt private activity bonds. So to give the public a chance to say, that's not a public worth public tax-exempt money. So, Ms. Hale.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. My only question, and I spoke a little bit with Dr. Wong out in the hall, but my only question would, would be, you know, if, if this entity that is forming across South Central and then Southeast Alaska, would we have assurance, I know you can't promise, but would we have assurance that you wouldn't just shut our facility down? And then all of a sudden, we don't have oncology in Juneau, which is really, really important for all of Southeast Alaska, and we wouldn't want that to happen.
Dr. Wong, is that for you? Come on, come on up, you bet. And, and press the button so it's green so we could hear you. And just identify yourself for the record.
Great, yeah. I'm Dr. Eugene Wong, one of the, or the local cancer doctor at the center. And, um, yeah, thank you guys very much for your time here tonight. Uh, just a short answer to your question. Yes, the purpose of the foundation is exactly the opposite of that concern. It's to enable all of our cancer clinics to continue to survive and thrive and keep operating here in the community for decades and decades into the future. And to provide the strength from being in a larger organization and the stability and, and a lot of other reasons to continue doing so. There's kind of, uh, maybe I'll just kind of give you some background context of it. I've been here in the Juneau community for ten years now. I moved here with my family in twenty thirteen. My kids now are entering high school. When we got here, they were in preschool. It's pretty unbelievable. Anyway, you know, do you know, we're kind of in a small town here. I work very closely with a lot of other medical colleagues, friends of mine, colleagues up in the Anchorage area, also Kenai, Matu. And every week, we meet together to do peer review of each other's work. We kind of criticize and comment on each other's work before any patients are treated. We, uh, sometimes cover each other's practices. We do quality assurance together. And over the years, we've explored various ways of trying to, I guess, in a sense, work, work more closely together. But also to figure out a way to strengthen each of our organizations, which are in, you know, smaller communities. And to make sure that we can continue providing our services in an excellent manner for hopefully decades to come. And the best structure that we could think of is what we're presenting today, which is to create a new nonprofit organization that would, uh, it has to acquire all of our existing buildings and land and stuff. And so the way that it would do that is it issues these tax-exempt bonds and then uses the proceeds to, uh, to purchase the centers. And then so now we will all be under this one organization of the nonprofit foundation. It allows for, uh, you know, for our own reasons, a lot of benefits. I'll just explain a few real quickly. You know, one of them is uh, by being part of a larger organization, we can benefit from economies of scale. So for example, to purchase one of our linear accelerators, our radiation equipment, each one, if I were to go out and talk with one of the companies, it would cost like four million dollars, basically their list price. But if I could come together and say, hey, we're part of a group and we're gonna buy four or five of them over the next two or three years, then they've already told us, we can get it for like two point two million dollars. Same thing with the service contracts for the machines, the software contracts. These are the list price individually. It's like four hundred thousand dollars a year. But as part of a larger organization, you can get it for like a little over two hundred thousand. That's one, you know, just one reason. So if we want to continue to be able to offer state-of-the-art care and technology and to be able to reinvest in bringing those into each of our communities. Another reason is, uh, is, uh, staffing. You know, usually we would like to have two therapists working each machine. And during the COVID years, we were down to one, and it took us two years to find another therapist. And luckily, I'm happy to say, just this month, like literally two weeks ago, she arrived here from San Diego, and she's fantastic. And, but it took us two years to find this one person. It's a very small field and even smaller to try to find someone who could say, yes, I'll move to Juneau for, you know, many, many years with my family. It would be a lot easier for them to commit to say, yes, I'd love to move to Alaska. Maybe I'll try out Juneau first for a few years. If it turns out we'd like a bigger city, they could easily slot into another job, maybe up in Anchorage. They wanted to go snow machine, snow machining all the time, they could go to Matu. And it's easier for us to, uh, find, uh, employees that way. Another reason is that, you know, not soon, but hopefully many, many years from now, you know, one day I might retire. And, uh, you know, to recruit another doctor here, it's very, very difficult as a solo, independent practice. You know, no doctors are coming out wanting to start their own practices anymore, as we just heard from the previous, David Keith. And so by being part of a larger organization, you know, doctors can say, okay, I have the stability of being part of a larger organization, the clinical support. And it'd be much easier to achieve that continuity. So that's kind of one reason. One reason is for all of these reasons specific to our practices, to make them stronger and more stable. But another reason is also by, uh, having a nonprofit entity. What we hope to do is take previously what we paid and, you know, the previous profit and, uh, federal income taxes. We, our goal is to now take that and reinvest it into our community. After we've upgraded machines and kept state-of-the-art care, but to take the excess and reinvest into each of these local communities. And, uh, so you know, approximate number, we're kind of currently projecting something in the four to five million dollar range. And so, for example, as Juneau being one of the four sites, we hope to give back and reinvest, you know, all it up to like a million dollars a year into various charitable organizations, other nonprofits, um, or anything that we could see the community benefiting from.
Thank you for coming and thank you for explaining all of that. None of, none of that, any of us had any idea about, I don't think. Questions for Dr. Huang? Uh, Ms. Tree.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. This might actually be for Mr. Merrill, I'm not sure. I think it, it seems like it's kind of a quirk that this even has to come to the Assembly. Normally, we would not be involved in the business dealings of a, of private businesses and nonprofits like this. And so I feel a little uncomfortable, I would feel uncomfortable objecting to anything just for that reason. Um, and especially since it doesn't put us on the hook for anything. But I will say, I, I do have a concern, and I don't know that I can turn this into a question, but maybe Mr. Merrill can address it. And my concern is that there are only three independent community directors on this board, and they're all from Anchorage. And I would really love to see, I guess, greater geographical representation, especially of Southeast Alaska, if this entity is going to start operating in Juneau.
Is that for you, Mr. Merrill?
Sure. Yes, I'd be happy to take that. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Great. Thank you also for allowing us the opportunity to share with you all what we're trying to accomplish. And as Dr. Wong shared, um, we look forward to all the benefits that, uh, this organization can provide the community. But to, to answer your question a, a little bit more clearly, the, 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 if you could just restate it one more time, if you would, just because there was a sentence or two that just didn't quite come through, I apologize.
Oh, sure. Um, my, my concern is that the board seems quite small and also very Anchorage-centric.
Yes, good. Thank you. So the, the, the board is, is constructed initially with the five members that you see there. I would point out that actually Dr. Wong is the Chief Medical Officer uh, of the Aurora Integrated Oncology Foundation. And that role, uh, does in fact, will report, uh, regularly to the Board of Directors in representing the clinical initiatives and operations of the cancer center, certainly including Juneau. So there, we fully do expect, um, to, uh, add folks to that board. And we would like to have some representation in the Southeast. We are, uh, fully supportive of that and, um, uh, likely would see that happening certainly in the future uh, as we, uh, move forward into operations.
This is kind of the initial board of setup of just five. We're currently, uh, considering or in talks to consider expanding, uh, the size of the board in the near future, you know, to say seven members or something else. And hopefully that will include, uh, from these other communities, one person, you know, for.
Great, thanks. Someone else had their hand up, uh, Ms. Hughes Candies.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Thanks, you guys for being here. This is an unusual one. So I will express, uh, similar discomfort. I just am trying to wrap my mind around it. It sounds great. Totally get the economy of scale. Love the idea of all of these being stronger and keeping this in all these communities. I tried to get a little more familiar with Tefra bonds and, um, someone said, you know, whether tax-exempt funds are worthy of a project. So given that it looks like, and I might be misunderstanding this, but from this memo, it seemed like they're for-profit oncology centers. Now, is there a way to achieve that same? I, I guess an umbrella organization that would give you that same strength and that same, um, improvement of care and economy of scale without Tefra bonds? Yeah. Do you need Tefra bonds in order to go from being of, again, a for-profit to form this nonprofit?
Mr. Merrill, go ahead.
Yes, and I, and I do have, um, our counsel to the foundation, uh, available to us this evening as well. I believe, uh, Julie and our, also our bond counsel is available. If you all want a, a specific answer to any of the tax-related or legal items just for, for availability, if that's of interest.
Can you answer Ms. Hughes Candy's question?
Yes, go ahead. Yeah, you, Dr. Wong.
Yeah, um, so there probably is, you know, but in considering this, you know, we really wanted to form an organization that, uh, you know, will be around for many, many, many years. And not just to create profit per se, but to, you know, be able to contribute back to each of our respective communities. And that's very, very important to all of, uh, you know, obviously me being a physician here in town, my kids go to school here. But to, but to all of our respective communities, we wanted to find a way to, uh, you know, be able to deliver that back to our community. In case it needs to be said, I'll just say, just so everyone is clear, the, the practices will continue to pay their respective property taxes back to the local, you know, back to Juneau. So we'll continue to pay whatever we've been paying in prior years. That doesn't change. And just in case it needs to be said, you know, the, this whole hearing, the bonds, we're not asking uh, the city of Juneau for anything like, nothing financially, there's no financial commitment. We're not asking for money, resources, um, or too much of your time. It's just that there's this, uh, rule about these bonds from the federal government that I can't read the IRS's mind. Uh, but from what I've been told by our counsel and the accountants, you know, these bonds are oftentimes, the reason why you're involved here is that, uh, these bonds are often issued to do large-scale infrastructure projects. So issue bonds to build a new bridge, maybe a new highway, maybe a waste trash facility, maybe a ballpark stadium. And, uh, before they just, you know, allow people just to jump in and start doing these large projects in the local community, they just wanted to give the local community a chance to say, you know, no, we don't want this, just a chance to decline it if you thought it would be a, a bad idea.
And there is, my, just if I could just.
Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um, there, um, my attorney did just let me know that, in fact, it had to go back a little bit, but just for your all's purposes and might be helpful for some research. I guess around two thousand twelve, eleven, uh, CBJ did, um, go through a Tefra hearing for Wildflower Court, the senior living facility. So just as a reference point. But I, I appreciate that may be some time ago, but.
That's helpful, thanks. Were, um, any other questions? Oh, you had another one, Ms. Hughes Candies?
If nobody else does, I just wanted to ask staff, uh, a cup, compress.
Go ahead.
A two-parter, a three-parter, um, or four-part. I, so I just wanna, there are some phrases in the memo that, you know, we don't generally see. Like we have been advised or these materials were provided, we don't know. And I appreciate the transparency, and it's a weird one, and that's why I said my discomfort and even asking you guys questions when you're not asking something from us. But do we feel confident that we are not obligated to anything? Not advised by someone else, but CBJ feels confident that we're not obligated to anything. Because I see, for instance, in Kenai's, uh, resolution, they have a whereas that says, in no way will this be construed to say that we're gonna pay anything back. So
Mr. Watt.
I would love one of those in hours if we do this.
Mr. Watt.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, Dr. Wong and Mr. Merrill reached out. Made with the request that we consider this and a consultation with the mayor and the deputy mayor. We were giving, uh, them audience to the Assembly. I think those kinds of questions, we would, we would ask for, uh, a legal advice probably from our bond counsel, um, advising us, uh, things like that. If, if you forwarded a request to the full Assembly to have a Tefra hearing.
I do like the, under no circumstances one myself.
Okay, I had a question. I just would. I, I just would say then, uh, it would be my preference. I I just would say then, it would be my preference that if we're gonna give staff the direction to for this resolution, that it sounds fine, but with the request that more research is done on CBJ's part, so we can have a hearty, this obligates us to nothing.
Okay. Any more questions? Ms. Hale.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I move that the Committee of the Hole forward a request for a resolution. Request staff to put together a resolution to be publicly noticed in accordance with the IRS requirements. And I also move that that resolution include page thirty-five of the packet, the third whereas, a whereas similar to the Kenai Peninsula Boroughs, whereas that says we are not obligated for anything, as Ms. Hughes Candice has pointed out, that would be included. And set for public hearing at the next regularly scheduled Assembly meeting. And I ask for unanimous consent.
Is there objection to that motion? Okay, hearing none. On that, thank you, Dr. Huang and Mr. Merrill. Appreciate what you're trying to do and we glad you're here.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, is there anything else come before the Committee of the Hole?
Nothing further.
I will remind you, we have meeting to meeting tomorrow and the next day. It's on Zoom, Mr. Chairman of the, yes, it's on Zoom. For interviews for the boards. Oh, see, I'm glad I said it. Some forgot. Thank you very much. Well, we're adjourned.